All right. Good evening. It is a minute or two after seven o'clock PM on the 17th of October. This is a regular meeting of the Richmond Public Schools Education. In attendance this evening, our board members, Paulus Cole, Tim Malik, John Ashby, Crystal Brockley, and Tim Paulus. I am Peter Tensley. We are joined this evening by student representative Emma Nolinger, as well as superintendent Steve Munowski. So I will pause for just a moment as we take a look at the mission of the school, just to kind of focus us in on why we're here and what we are doing. Richmond Public Schools inspires and empowers each individual to learn, grow, and excel. And so that, of course, is the spirit that will guide our conversation this evening. With that in mind, I would ask any member if they are prepared to move the agenda.
I'll move the agenda.
I'll second that. So we've moved my policy and seconded by Ashby. Any discussion on the agenda? As prepared. If there's no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Clear votes aye, and the agenda is approved. We can move on then to information and proposals from reports from school sources. We'll begin with the superintendent update.
All right, so just a beginning report back to the community in regard to our study session. So the board, in alignment with policy, conducted a self-evaluation where each board member had reflected on their board level of performance, both themselves as an individual and for the board as a group. Each person shared their thoughts and their reflections on areas of strength and how they analyzed their own performance and our team performance. The board then worked collaboratively based on that feedback and reflection to set some goals for the year. Those goals were really a lot around communications and some of the things that we have been talking about over the past set of months. Board goals included really looking at the ongoing transparency of procedures, policies, and communications specific to marketing and making sure we have a clear message and alignment of our work throughout the district. I'm also thinking about communications process, policies, and protocols, making sure that they align and that the board's doing its best to ensure high levels of student outcomes. And then with that ongoing theme of communication, really looking at communication and feedback bidirectionally, so we are communicating out but also receiving communication ineffectively with our community and our extended community to ensure that we are being thoughtful and responsive as both the board and the school district. Board members set individual goals, which each board member is going to be able to reflect on for their own performance and think about throughout the course of the year, and they'll utilize those when we meet again in a year to look at our performance overall and see how people did in regard to focusing on those goals. A couple of those goals I'll share would be increasing participation in school events and liaison responsibilities, making sure to have that ongoing deep relationship with the city, continuing to gain further clarity around our negotiations process, and then also making sure that we increase community participation in both our schools and also our events. Finally, the conversation turned to student achievement and the student achievement goals of the board, which align to things that, again, we've been talking about for an extended period of time. In addition to one enrollment goal and continuing to grow market share, the board talked about not just focusing on proficiency of our students, but really looking at growth, not just in relation to MCA scores, but demographic breakdowns in regard to participation and making sure all students have access to high-level curriculum, to gifted coursework and opportunities that push them, both in the classroom but then also extracurricularly, and looking at those also for students who have been within our district for an extended period of time. So the board has outlined some goals for performance as a team, goals for performance as an individual, then also some of the student achievement focal points that we'll be talking about in the coming months.
Thank you very much for that summary. Any reflections from other board members, or do you feel like Mr. Munowski pretty well covered it? Excellent. He does good. Good work. Good work. He does actually quite well as they described, so.
Excellent. Type-in practice served me well. I would also like to, prior to transitioning to Mr. Holgi, who will be sharing our enrollment report in just a minute, just also commend the board for their work, just in that transparency of open reflection. You know, the board has pushed me as a superintendent to take feedback, to openly report it, to openly talk about areas of strength, areas with opportunity for growth, and I think the board modeled very effectively for our community. Six elected leaders who also will follow that same type of process, and I think that we all perform more effectively when we are all honest about our performance, we all look at how we're doing, and then we all set high-level goals to continue to push ourselves into the future. So again, thank you to the board members. I appreciate you participating in the process, and I'm impressed by your reflection and your ongoing commitment to excellence. So with that, Mr. Holgi, please talk about our student enrollment.
Thank you. There are actually two reports tonight where we collect information on October 1. One is our student enrollment count, and the other is our staffing program. The enrollment report specifically is a very high-level report here tonight with information that comes in an overview. We will have a chance to dig down into more details around that when we do our Where We Are and Enrollment Report, which gives more details about where Richmond Public Schools are, who aren't enrolled in Richmond Public Schools, where students are coming to Richmond Public Schools from, and more specific information about our demographic breakdown here in the district. But just overall, misinformation is in your packet, this broad spreadsheet. What this does is it shares how many students are enrolled in each one of the grade levels at each one of the schools, what that total is, how that compares to the October 1 projections, which is the information that we set last winter, is what our projections were looking like, what the variance from that projection was, and then over on the right-hand side is our actual October 1 2015 count, along with our, it's a September 30 count because that was a Friday and October 1 was on Saturday, so our September 30 count this year and what that variance is compared to last year. One of the things that's different this year is with our voluntary pre-K program. Those students who are enrolled in our voluntary pre-K program are now included in these counts. We tried to differentiate those and separate those out here at the bottom just because it's a different way of looking at it, and those students weren't included in our projections. But overall, what you see is we have our October 1 projections for 4,131 students. We actually had 4,235 students in our K through 12 with our special education, early childhood special education, or Transition Plus program. And then when we include voluntary pre-K students, we had 146 of those. Our enrollment actually, as far as what's reported into the state with our gap to family membership, represents 4,381 students. So we'll go over those variations here just a little bit as we move forward. Again, we have 4,235 in our kindergarten through 12th grade, along with those two special education programs that are reported, kindergarten and after 12th grade. We have 4,381, which are in our pre-K through 12, and those special education programs. 146 of those are in our voluntary pre-kindergarten program. 2,099 are elementary kindergarten through the fifth grade. 891 are middle school. 1,151 are ninth through 12th grade. 81 in the pre-kindergarten, and 13 in the Transition Plus. One of the variations that we had this year, the 81 pre-kindergarten special education students specifically is where this one is, that is down from what was projected last year, and the 146 students is up from what you may have heard previously about serving 126 kids, is because there are students that would have otherwise, that are currently in our early childhood special ed program, but are also receiving services through that voluntary pre-K program, so we can only count those once, and so they're included in this voluntary pre-K number. So that's why this number is larger and this number is smaller. This represents 250 students more than projection with the voluntary pre-K, or 104 students more than projection without the voluntary pre-K categorized in there, and then in total, that's 79 students more than were served in 1516, if we include the pre-K, and 67 students less than were served in 1516 without that pre-K program.
Can I ask one?
Go ahead. Yep.
Very quick, very fine question. Do voluntary pre-K kids count towards our ADM or not, because that was already a dedicated funding source?
Voluntary pre-kindergarten students count towards our ADM. They receive funding like any other student. I compare mostly to when we had half-day kindergarten programs. They don't receive a full ADM because they're only attending part of the day. They receive, I think it's about .49 of an ADM or .48 of an ADM, given the number of hours that they're served during the course of the whole year. A 1.0 would be if they were served 850 hours, but the maximum that we could receive is .6 funding of that. So the time that was set up in our program is just under halftime from that 850. So yes, they count. They're not a full ADM on how that's calculated, but they generate the same funding that any other student in the district does, as far as levy, state aid, and all the different components of funding that tie into that compensatory achievement and integrations. Each one of those categories receive funding that way. We do have other students who are served in the community at part of our pre-kindergarten program, pathway, in our traditional early childhood programming, as well as pathway scholarship students. Those students are not counted in this because they don't have that same state funding, although we receive funding for those. Does that clarify it? It's a complicated calculation, and Mary and her team have worked hard to figure out who fits into which buckets and which programs and stuff like that. Any other questions on this information? On the previous slide. Moving on, these are just some graphical representations to show how this relates over time. Back in 2005, we had 4,037. That dipped to 3,980 students in 2009. You can see that grew up in the over time around 12, 13, 14. Between 2012, 2013, and 2014, it was relatively stable. As we know, we could drop down about 90 students last year. We've seen another small decline, but with the pre-K programs, that brought us back up to 4,281 students that were served. And then this is just graphically representing the different grade level bands. We break out, the red bands are the large elementary, high school, and middle school. The green band is the kindergarten through two, and you can see that that went up and had 11, 12, 13, and then that's dropped down a little bit. The grades three through five has been on a gradual increase since 2008, moving up there. Elementary obviously is a larger band of kindergarten through fifth grade, so that's why this number is so high, and that brings together the blue and the green lines. So that dropped down slightly this year. You can see the high school has been relatively stable with a small uptick here this year, and then the middle school, we can see, had a little larger growth after being dropped down, but it's similar to where they were in 2013. So just some graphic representations of that same information, showing that information over time. There's a black dot down here just because I wanted to start our voluntary pre-K program, just to show where that is, and that's something that we can also look at building out here in the future as well. Obviously, it's a pretty small number compared to the rest of them because it's just one grade level that's attached there. So with that, any other questions or comments from Superintendent Munowski?
I know the concern was the redevelopment of these apartments on the campus. Have you been able to do any data on that?
We haven't had a chance to analyze that yet. That's information that we hopefully will be able to bring back as part of the Where We Are enrollment piece. We know that there are some students who moved out of the district who are still attending or wanting to still attend in Richmond Public Schools and are working through some transportation pieces, but it's just all anecdotal information. We haven't been able to break down and say exactly the students who we're at, what's now the concierge apartments, and where they are specifically in Richmond Public Schools from a data piece.
So I always tend to look at this, at the far two columns, you know, our 2015 actual and our 2016 actual, and then just look vaguely across to sort of see how the first grade class in '16 is comparing to the kindergarten class in '15 and so forth. The idea of sort of retaining, how effectively are we retaining a cohort of children as they move through. I just really want to reflect that there is a gain in students. If we look at that, you know, starting sort of in sixth grade and moving forward, we're either gaining or holding steady as well, and I think that's reckless to see that. And we're not, we've sort of reversed a trend there, which is great. I am curious, now, we do tend to have a lead which has been observed before in the sort of K-5 grade. Do we know if that is a phenomenon that is unique to Richmond Public Schools or would other public school districts experience a similar phenomenon in our, you know, sort of in the metro region? Just curious.
I don't know.
We know, we don't know. So I guess I'd have two requests. One request would be, when you get to this point of being able to normalize like where we are in our enrollment report, if we can maybe see a little bit more of a trend. So here we have two years of data. Maybe we can see three or four years of sort of being able to follow a particular cohort that is matriculating and moving through. And then if we could learn anything from any of our neighbors about, so we could have some way of benchmarking or normalizing that phenomena?
I believe some of that is part of the Where We Are and Enrollment, but we can pay specific focus to that. You know, as you pointed out, one of those areas of pride does have to do with secondary, where we did increase fifth to sixth grade, which is not a pattern that's happened. We also know that there's been that pattern of significant drop between ninth and 10th grade that is no longer there. Due to some heavy efforts and supports, putting the ninth-grade students and increasing the pass rate, we've changed that pattern, and then really looking at, are there other patterns that we can identify and make some positive change on? Absolutely sounds like something for us to follow up with.
Another column that might be helpful in there is the total of the elementary schools, like right between STEM and RMS, where you just add them all up so you can quickly see the difference. Do you know what I'm saying?
Elementary here, 130, 461. So it's the total of the elementaries, the total of each one of the buildings is here in the bottom compared to the projection, and the difference between that projection.
Okay, I'll tell you that. Go on, and I'll check.
Okay. So, ah, those, any other questions or?
Other operations, questions? Please, if you'd like to see the data crunched.
Well, you're thinking of that. We've talked as an administrative team focusing on child, early childhood, and focusing on K-5. If you notice, K-2 is that area. If we go back to the slide with the graphs, that is the area where we're seeing the reduction in students. We're seeing 3.5 increasing. We saw RMS bounce up. We're seeing the high schools stay around the same, and so really focusing on that attraction and focusing on the marketing component, as we talked about as a board for our goals, really thinking about marketing and capturing that market share specific to students as they enter, and really focusing on aligning that marketing and outreach to make sure that we change that trend specifically to our K-2 team.
And I think that's what I'm eager to dig into more in December, is, you know, and I think to John's question, like, what do we think is behind that? Are there specific external factors, are there things happening internally? So I'm really eager to just spend a bunch more time really discussing this when we get a full report in December.
And additionally, I'll have a report back from our strategic plan work groups. Our leadership team is working on a monthly basis in a work group, talking about this particular situation. Noting the secondary situation, we actually had a lot of work put in on those. I mean, there was a significant amount of new and changed recruitment efforts that occurred at our middle school, which we believe is the least partially responsible for that transition upwards this past year, and then also some areas of focus at the high school were as such. And so I'll also be happy to bring back around the same time as where we are in enrollment, a report back from our administrative team from the elementaries as to some of the plans of what we're doing to go out, market, and recruit, and make sure that we're putting some strategies in place to increase enrollment in our early age grades.
All right. Outstanding. So thank you for that report, Greg. Do we, have you still on the FTE?
Yeah, I'm moving forward here to sound.
All right. Let us have it.
Sounds great. So similar to where we take a snapshot of our enrollment on October 1, we also take a look at a snapshot of our staffing. Lynn Opets is here. She's put together what's, I think, 22 pages or 24 pages in your packet of detailed information of this, each one of our staff members, each one of their positions, what their FTE is. And you can see there's a lot of numerical breakdown based on partial FTEs and things like that. Top-level overview to that entire package. This year's staffing report shows 648 employees, representing 586, .79, 241 FTEs in the district. Obviously, not all employees are full-time, so that's why that breakdown breaks down differently. Of those, 351 are teachers, 114 are paraprofessionals, 75 are custodians and transportation bus drivers, 24 clerical, 33 nutrition services, 14 miscellaneous, our outreach workers are our largest group within that, and then 37 administration and classified management employees. When we look at those changes overall, that represents a decrease of 33 employees or 27 FTE in the district. 18 of those are teacher FTEs, six are paraprofessionals, three are bus drivers, one is administrative, and 1.2 are clerical FTEs. When we look at breaking down by buildings, and again, with the almost 100 student reduction last year, and again, the projections for reductions this year, that's the biggest accounting for these reductions in FTEs. 6.8 are at Centennial, 6.1 at Sheridan, right around six was at the middle school, four at the high school, 2.4 at RDS, and then a small portion at STEM. STEM actually had a large reduction last year with their enrollment changes, and then an increase of 1.7 at Central, which is specifically within our early childhood special education program, and the paraprofessional staffing in there was the largest chunk of that. So that's really high-level overview. Obviously, you have an entire document that represents more information with a detailed breakdown of the headcount staffing, the FTE staffing, and then the change from last year to this year by position, by building, was all included in that packet as well. So any other questions or comments? Other than that, I would like to thank Lynn for putting all that information together in a very quick period of time, going from October 1 to here this meeting, and is really quick to turn that whole report together. A few years ago, we had asked, is this just a report that comes to the board? We do actually use this in a number of different arenas for recording purposes with the state. It's a foundational piece for our STAR report, but then also drives our grant applications and then other information as far as when we start to look at how students are being served in the different buildings and what their service looks like at different positions.
Any questions on staffing?
Greg, I was combining the two, the enrollment and the staffing. Is it that simple to then deduce what the class sizes are on average, building by building? For example, if there's 90 kids in third grade in one building and three third-grade teachers, then they're probably averaging thirty.
You could find the averages tied in with that. There are, I have to think through this, there are going to be some variations, and that's some of the information that we'll start to break down on that where we are in enrollment report, where we'll be able to calculate what those average class sizes are with more information. Where we are in enrollment, we actually look specifically at how many students are sitting in different classes. Some of the things when we take a look at those, we have some students that are served primarily outside of the regular classroom in special education program and things like that, and so that's where it's not a clear breakdown of saying, here's how many students are in every class, and they have a grade level in every building, because there are some variations with center-based programs and things like that in some of the buildings.
I would love to know if there is a different report or another place to get even some deeper information about staff and the types of things that I'm truly interested in, and I think would be helpful to know, and connect to some of our strategic plan areas are, you know, how are we doing with the diversity of our staff, and how are we doing with, you know, the tenure of our staff across the different employment groups that, you know, you highlighted up here? How are we doing with retaining our staff, and, you know, how many people want to come work in Richmond Public Schools based on the applications that we got this year? So some of those, I know it's a lot more challenging to actually report on that stuff, which is why I don't know if it exists or if it's possible, but those are things that I'd really be interested in having some more insights about as well.
Some of that reporting is stuff that shows up on state reports, so we can take a look at how that information is reported when it comes out that way. If there are specific things, you know, right now we have a lot of information, and we can identify most things as far as education models and things like that as part of our system. So we collect all kinds of data, and it gets reported if we know specifically what it is. We don't have a formal report that's been developed that looks at that specifically that comes here to report if anyone can.
Anything further on this item? If not, thank you very much, Greg, for that report. So we can move forward to the consent agenda. Are there any questions regarding the consent agenda? If not, vote for a motion.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion by Paulus, and a second by Ashby on the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Clear votes. Clear votes aye. Motion passes. So we move on to old business item A, which is policy 803.1. We had our first read of this, I think, two minutes ago, a reread, and it is coming back now with one small amendment.
Yes, so interesting court, because I was talking to Mr. Holgi about our guidelines. Guidelines are actually, if we note at the bottom, at the very bottom of the guideline, and I, something new that I learned from our procedure manager, Mr. Holgi, is that actually, from a guideline perspective, those aren't by policy necessarily approved by the board. However, we do bring them to the board to repeatedly go through and sort of present those revisions to make sure that we are all in line with that. So something I learned as we were working our way through. This particular guideline, as we got feedback from the board, was to make sure that it aligns to our 803 and that the pieces of 803.1 help us implement 803 effectively. And so if you note, there was one change put in, in addition to a preference order given to nonprofit organizations and those organizations whose activities helped to facilitate the mission of the school district. And so we did go back and make sure from the feedback of the board that our 803.1 does align to the expectations of what policy you agreed.
Any questions regarding the addition to this guideline?
I just have a question. This is for leases where we have a legal contract drawn up and not, for example, there are organizations that rent gym space or classrooms on a one-off or semi routine basis, but not, they don't have a formal lease.
Mr. Holgi?
That is correct. Thank you, sir.
So this is for, if someone approaches us and wants to have a formal lease arrangement that's outside of the normal application to use a classroom for, or a gym for a party or whatever.
Will you, leave to Mr. Holgi to support in the logistics here.
Thank you. So yes, we do have a variety of leases. That's what this is specifically driving towards. We have another policy that is community use of school facilities, which drives all the arrangements tied in with that, and there are different rates based on different groups and associations and stuff like that. Here we have just some examples. We have some groups that use some of our larger spaces for church services on Sundays and the auditorium and things like that. It's not necessarily full yearly, exclusive use of space, but it's regular and routine use of space, you know, at least weekly. So we have a couple of facilities that way. Richmond Public School has a lease for some of the space that they're using in the district. We have some organizations that use space at Central, and so it is those that are ongoing and regular. Head Start's another program that's in the lease program, so it's early childhood. Some community organizations that use space, as well as some that are Wednesdays and Sundays or Sundays or weekends or whatever, things like that. Another one just for your information, Richmond Public Schools in Pontefarm has a lease arrangement. It's actually, they don't pay anything as part of that lease for use of space, so we are cognizant of how we use space for community organizations as well.
All right. So having been through this, we can certainly look for a motion on the guidelines.
I would move approval of administrative guidelines, 803.1 as presented. Selecting.
Any discussion? So we have a motion by Malik and a second by Brockley. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Clear votes aye. Motion carries. So we can move on to guidelines for the policy 802.
All right, so we had already passed 802, which talks about having effective written handbooks and procedures for crisis management. As we note, we do have both a crisis management handbook and manual, and then also a postvention manual. As we discussed at our previous meeting, I would be bringing back guidelines 802.1 through 802.14, suggesting that we don't utilize and publish the guidelines, that are actually not required by the Minnesota School Boards Association, and that we utilize our crisis management policies as internal handbook and an internal document. So what this would functionally do is remove these guidelines. Similarly, we would, on a yearly basis, continue to update our crisis management handbook Similarly, we would, on a yearly basis, continue to update our crisis management handbook, which we always do, and utilize the policies or the procedures contained therein from that point forward.
So help me just a little bit with making sure I understand what our action or non-action might be. So you're, what I heard from you is that you're suggesting that we have a change in practice in terms of whether we have the guidelines as opposed to the handbook, the published guidelines as opposed to the handbook.
Right, so the action I'm suggesting...
The guidelines would be retracted.
Correct. I'm suggesting that we retract and remove from board policy 802.1 through 802.14, and we no longer publish those guidelines, with obviously the board's clear expectation through policy 802 that we have a functional crisis management policy, a functional crisis management handbook, and a functional post prevention handbook that are utilized and trained for our staff within the district.
So any discussion on this item?
Question slash thought, because I agree with the overall move to not have this be board policy. I think the one, the question that arose for me though is I can see the helpfulness of having this in writing somewhere so that parents, families, and others can actually see what is supposed to happen, and would hate to lose that level of transparency or clarity so people can see, is this what happened or is this not what happened? And so my question is, how can we make sure that our families know what to expect when there is a crisis and that it is something that they can access and know what we are committed to doing for them and for their children without it needing to be a board policy or something that, you know, is in this particular format?
That's a good question, and something I would have to answer before we take the next step forward.
I guess my thought was mainly with balancing the oversight responsibility of the board with the, balancing that responsibility with, I think, the other concerns that you brought forward in terms of having, you know, some of these plans be public when that may actually pose a security risk, and I think Crystal's point as well. Yeah, so I guess the question that boils down to, and it might be worth us taking a little back at 802 to see if we feel that the policy itself has enough strength that satisfies our oversight obligations without having to go into failure.
Makes sense. So as I'm hearing correctly, we should review 802 one more time at our next meeting, and then I have some information to reflect on to present prior to moving forward with guidelines and what next steps are going to be.
I did take a peek back at 802 to see, and I feel like the ideal would be something in between the two, right? Something in between the sort of very high altitude of 802 and this very detailed, and I think, as has been shared, potentially sharing too much information in a way that also does not protect our children and our staff. But yeah, I'm not committed to it being a board policy, it's more the question of how is it accessible for folks who want to have that right level of information, so we're just clear about what they get.
Yeah, so I mean, it certainly sounds like, I think your solution, Crystal, is a good one to take a look at 802 in terms of, you know, maybe making that just a little bit longer anyway. So we can have that be the board approved item and then be able to move forward comfortably with the other recommendations. Any other feedback from the board on this item?
I'll additionally take a look at a few other districts around us. I know that I've searched a few and they would have similar type of policy without guidelines available, but I'll see if there are differences between our 802 policy and what they would have in a similar category to see, to see that our policies and practices would end up similar.
All right, thank you. So we'll go ahead and take this under advisement. Moving on to new business, the errors and omissions report. Mr. Holgi.
Just a real quick review of the errors and omissions insurance policy. This is the last insurance policy up for your approval here for this current fiscal year. It is a renewal, has $3 million liability that's available to it. It's a renewal with no increased premium, it's the $18,000 premium for the year, which is the same as one of us last year, which was a slight deduction from the year previous to that. So pretty clean renewal on that, and continues to cover us for errors and omissions and upcoming practices.
Any questions around the renewal of errors and omissions policy?
Greg, how long have we had $3 million for the liability?
I believe we, this is the second year that we've been at $3 million, we've posted $3 million. It was last year we were doing that.
If there are no further questions, we can certainly entertain a motion.
I'll move it. The policy as presented.
Is there a second? All right. Carrying on with the traditional evening, we have a motion by Paulus. Any discussion on this item? If you have all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. All right, we'll move on to the paraprofessional contract. Mr. Miltier.
Thank you. I'm very pleased tonight to present to you the ratified paraprofessional contract with our paraprofessionals, and I'd just like to take a minute to recognize the outstanding work that our paraprofessionals do throughout the district, from our managerial paras that are working in our lunchrooms and with our students on the playgrounds, to our clerical paraprofessionals, our classroom paraprofessionals, instructional, special ed paraprofessionals, and also our security monitors and campus supervisors that are working to keep all of our students safe while we're here on campus. And then also our technology paras that are working to make sure that the technology systems within the district are working very well. So I'd just like to take this minute to recognize the outstanding work that they do. We did meet with them, they met on, I believe, October 5th and ratified this contract. The general guidelines were within your board packet there as to what the changes are that we made this year. So we're looking at a general base salary increase of 2% on both year 1 and year 2 of the contract. We did do a little bit of work this year to group classifications and categories of those jobs. We've been working in the past couple of years to align specialty paraprofessionals with our instructional paraprofessionals, and we're able to make that final movement this year and group them into the same classification. So we now have four classifications of paraprofessionals within the school district and different categories within each of those classifications that you'll see in the actual contract itself. We added language to be consistent with other classified contracts for dues checkoff, new employee information, and also access to personnel file, which is consistent with the other groups. We clarified sick leave language again, which is consistent with state and statute. We removed language requiring the district to meet and confer regarding topics of training for paraprofessionals, and we also removed some language providing for guaranteed interviews for internal candidates qualified for a position as determined by the union. We add language providing one more step in the grievance process, again, to be consistent with other contracts, and then also finally added language clarifying processing of vacation requests, which again is consistent with some of our other contracts as well.
Any questions for Mr. Miltier on the paraprofessional contract? All right, well, I think you've done very excellent work negotiating a strong contract. I will certainly look for a motion if any board member is so moved.
I'll move approval of the paraprofessional contract.
So we have a motion by Malik and a second by Cole. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much. So, very good. So we can move on to item 7, which is advanced planning. We begin with the winter state update. Steve?
Not much to present at this time, however, we obviously have an election occurring not long from now, as we remember. Some multiples of our buildings will be having professional development at our states on the 8th of November, which is Election Day. The only thing to report is that conversation continues on with the Cruz Guzman lawsuit regarding desegregation connected to the state of Minnesota. AMSD has decided to be a fiscal host, which means they are neither sponsoring the organization or the conversation, but they are helping partner with superintendents in school districts to engage in the conversation and supporting the opportunity for school districts to do that. We are participating in conversation and continuing that role of listening to try to understand equity and desegregation in the metro and what the implications might be with the outcome of the Cruz Guzman lawsuit, which is set to begin, I believe, in September of next fall in the court system.
The one thought that I had on my mind, and this intersects with the upcoming election, obviously, a number of our legislators are up for election, so we may or may not have a change in personnel, but I'm thinking about scheduling a study session with our legislators. In the past, we've frequently done that in January, the idea of being that we want to try and meet with them prior to the beginning of session. We've also talked about a meeting in June as a follow-up after the legislative session is concluded. What do people think? I mean, my personal feeling would be to aim for, to aim for something, you know, basically after the election is over and we know who our legislators are, that we would take the initiative to get something going for perhaps that second meeting in January. I think that makes more sense prior to the legislative session.
Then, because this is going to be a fidget year for the legislature, it's especially important, given all of the, I think, big decisions about education funding, that they are going to be wrapped in what, probably right away, as soon as they get started.
All right, so...
So second meeting in January, we will be reaching out if that doesn't work. I think we've also had them in the first in February, but we'll make sure to get in contact with a lot of legislators soon to try to set up a study session.
Outstanding. Any other thoughts on legislative items? I mean, it's kind of quiet right now. Item D, information and questions from the board, and we'll open the floor. Anyone has anything to share?
Peter, I have a reminder, last, I think, a couple meetings ago, I mentioned the Woodlake Nature Center farmyard booth. It's called the Halloween event for, it's a non-scary Halloween event, and it's this Saturday, October 22, at 3:00 at Woodlake. There's a small charge, but you could get dressed up, you get cocoa as included, you could go to the rehistoric theater. There'll be llamas and goats, apparently.
Goats or goats.
Goats.
And goats, perhaps.
Non-scary goats.
It's just friendly.
Friendly, most certainly. They stress it's a non-scary event, so. I know David, who's not here tonight, he inquired and was very interested, so. I might have to see David tomorrow, would you please let him know?
Yeah, it's a big tradition in Richfield, is the Woodlake Halloween. Any, so, we'll talk about our future meeting dates. Our first meeting in November is Monday, the 7th, the day prior to the election, that will be hosted by the high school here in the district board room at 7:00. And then our second meeting in November is the 21st, also here in the district board room at 7:00. Are there suggested agenda items that folks would like us to bring forward? Yeah, Crystal?
I don't have that. I'm going to go back a half a second if that's okay. Well, actually, I'm sadly going to miss that meeting. I'm going to be out of town for a work trip, so I apologize in advance that I will not be here. But last week, I did get to go spend some time with our District 287 partners, and so wanted to share about that. I was invited to represent Richfield in the conversation, and I think it's such an important one that that's why I wanted to share. So one of their two mission outcomes, as they call it, for the strategic plan that's 2015 to 2016, is that by 2020, each member district, so us, will declare satisfaction with the level of racial equity and excellence in the services delivered by intermediate District 287. So that's obviously a very high bar and really important, given the work that they do, and so that this meeting last week was just starting the conversation about what does that even look like? What would need to be true for us as member districts to be able to agree to that statement? And so I personally am very eager and interested to see where 287 decides to take that and what it means for us and for our kids that are in 287 programming, so just wanted to share that and hopefully we'll all get more updates about what that means if they continue to figure out how to actually put that into action.
Thank you. Any further items to share? You can certainly be thinking about future agenda items, and this is a good time to bring forward anything if there's a particular initiative that we've discussed that you're looking for feedback on, an update on information that you'd like the administration to gather. This is a good time to bring that forward.
And as a reminder from the notes from last board meeting, November 7th will bring us an update on the process regarding 7th period day. We're determining if that is best served in a study session to have deeper conversation around it, or a presentation from the high school. And so we'll be figuring that out in the next few days, and we'll obviously set the agenda for a study session if needed, and if not, we will do that during the regular board meeting.
All right, sounds like, it sounds like we are at this point feeling fairly comfortable about where things are moving, and very good. So having heard nothing further, I think we can look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So, motion by Paulus, second by Ashmead. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we are adjourned.